Order the Westlake City Schools regular board meeting for March 28, 2022. Roll call.
Craft.
Here.
Kurna.
Here.
Fenuken.
Here.
Wazinski.
Here.
Stoll.
Here.
If everyone will join me and stand for the pleasure of the nations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors here in the room as well as those online. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of.
Second discussion. Roll call.
Wazinski.
Yes.
Fenuken.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Kurna.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yeah.
Motion carriers. At this time we have a hearing in the public, the public may address the board during the periods of meeting designated for public participation. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present in voting. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time?
Agenda items only.
Agenda items only, right on. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well. May I have your name and your address, please?
Ah, yes, I'm almost up. Three, six, two, two, five, third way circle.
Thank you.
Okay, I wasn't sure this was gonna be the first thing, so. Um, good evening, Dr. Gaggen, Mr. Hopkins, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Amal Mustafa, and most of you know, I teach in Westlake. Um, I've been a teacher since 2009 in this district, third grade, I teach part-time. And this year, I took a leave of absence because I had a baby in August, so my baby's back there. Hopefully it'll be okay here. Um, her name is Miriam, and she's seven months old, so it feels nice being here because it helps me look forward to coming back into the classroom in the fall. So you're probably wondering, why are you here? Go home, enjoy the time with your baby. Um, I'm here today, joined by another Westlake parent. Um, of students who attend Westlake schools. We've come to officially and formally inform you that many of our students at our schools will be observing the month of Ramadan, and it's pronounced Ramadan, we Englishize it a little bit, in a few days. During this month, Muslims all over the world fast for 30 days during the daylight hours, abstaining from food, drink, among other things. It is a time of extra worship, self-reflection, discipline, restraint, charity, and forgiveness, excuse me. As I mentioned some of these things, I cannot help but recall the district's portrait of a lifelong learner. Now, I've been out for a couple of months, so I'm not quite sure where we are on that journey. But it was very easy to see the parallels between those character traits and the character traits that Muslims, especially Muslim parents in this district, they're trying to strive. They're striving to instill these in their children. So during this month, we are focused on those character traits that I had mentioned before. Now, because I'm limited to three minutes, I don't have time to go through each of those character traits, but I could elaborate later if requested or needed. Most of you were probably already aware of the coming of this month. But what brought us in here today is to bring it to the forefront of your mind and to let you know that although Muslim students compromise a minority in this district, there are many of them in the Westlake schools who will be observing this month as well as celebrating Eid at the conclusion of this month. We also wanted to express our gratitude to the district for doing what they can to accommodate this subgroup of students. Please continue to be mindful of our Muslim student population and continue to accommodate them based on their needs. Please continue to be intentional about the decisions moving forward, like how Eid is currently a teacher workday on one of the calendar options for the 24-25 school year. This is an example of one small step forward, but only one small step that won't be in effect for another two years. We want the students to be proud of who they are and to have a sense of belonging, to be recognized and to be valued. Westlake has already taken gradual steps forward in doing this, and we thank you. If the parents who came with me, which it's one tonight, if you could please come forward. Um, that is the conclusion of my speech, but.
He gets three minutes too.
Um, well, he's, he probably won't need the three minutes, but what we did, um, something that Muslims do is, um, we've kind of like, not, I shouldn't say Americanized it, but we want to make, we want to, um, bring awareness to it, and we've used some methods, um, that other people use for other holidays. So what we did is we made Ramadan awareness bags, and we've put objects, some are edible, to represent different, um, different traits of this month and for the holiday. So we're gonna give each of the members, including Dr. Gaggen and Mr. Hopkins, just a, a small treat. Um, and there's some information there for you to have, so if you want to help me pass those out.
And Mrs. Mustafa, will you introduce this gentleman who was with you?
I'm gonna have actually him introduce himself.
My name is Paulson Torgali, uh, I will look for that key and detect each other. Uh, basically, I'm from Egypt, I've been here for, uh, five years now, just to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you very much for allowing us to come today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board at this time?
Thank you, Mrs. Mustafa, I think that's a, um, uh, an opportunity for us as a board, uh, we had a retreat recently. Uh, just reminding us, uh, to remind ourselves as well as the public, our mission and our vision statements. Uh, our mission, of course, is we educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. And our vision, Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered, 21st century learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement and tangible results.
We all had an opportunity to review minutes from our, uh, past meetings, February the 7th as well as February the 28th. All of those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The minutes are approved. And we will move to the treasures recommendations.
I just wanna put in a, a quick little comment, uh, normally during this time, we'd have a superintendent's report, treasurer's report, we move that to a little bit, uh, later after the action items. Um, so we'll, we will come back to those in a little bit. So, um, tonight I have one, uh, recommendation in front of the board. Typically, this time of year in, uh, March of each year, we would be approving, uh, tax rates that were required to do so, uh, uh, for the county, uh, and then it's submitted to the state. The county has asked the state for an extension, not on behalf of Westlake schools, but on behalf of the entire county. As there, uh, uh, they had, uh, someone in their office leave, and so they had a little bit more work to do, and so they're a little behind on getting their information out. So they've asked for an extension until, uh, I believe it's May 1st now, so I'm looking at April to have those tax rates in front of the board. Um, as you've known from in the past, the tax rates are the overall tax rate that we approve, it's not, uh, our effective tax rate. So usually the numbers are, we approve a tax rate of like 65 mils because that was what was voted. We're really right now sitting right around 30 mils, but we'll go over that in more detail when we have that. Tonight, I just have the one rec, uh, one recommendation, it's a then and now certificate, uh, for boarding food service for, uh, uh, cafeteria department.
Is there a motion to approve treasures recommendation 3A?
Still move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Stoll.
Yes.
Fenuken.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Wazinski.
Yes.
Kurna.
Yes.
Motion carriers, thank you.
Dr. Gaggen, we're gonna move on to superintendent's.
Sounds good.
Um, we have a few tonight. Uh, first one, as always, is resolution to accept gifts and donations. We have two to recognize, uh, from Stick to Your Buns Bakery, uh, donated individual wrapped cookies valued at $121.75 to the Westlake City School District. And from Dr. Santosh and Dr. Sapna Thomas, uh, donated $500 to the school guidance department for decision day activities at Westlake High School, would like to thank them for that donation. Uh, letter B, we have, uh, two administrative, uh, contracts to approve. One is Tom Faskel returning for one more year, um, as the principal of Lee Bernison Middle School. Um, and then the other one we have here in, uh, at, um, uh, Hilliard with us today is Nick Rinallo, who is, uh, coming in as the athletic director. Nick, I don't know if you wanna take a moment, stand at the podium so we can embarrass you.
I will tell you, and, and so I'll talk a little bit about it, and actually, uh, both John and Barb were involved in this process. And I have to commend, I see Mr. Woods back there, uh, Mr. Woods, Mr. Mabor, uh, really put together a nice process. And, uh, we had, uh, I think over 65, uh, candidates apply, over 100 started their applications, but we had around 60-something that were fully completed. And, uh, a really, really, really strong pool, I think they scheduled 18 initial interviews. And then went down to, how many did you guys see? So five, and they brought it down to five, and, and Nick rose to the top. Um, I can tell you that when Mr. Craft and I performed the, um, final interview, we had two very strong candidates come in. Um, I felt Nick really separated himself in a few ways, um, to be the work that you've done with sponsorships, um, which is gonna be a point of conversation, I think, later, uh, and, and how organized you are with that. Um, felt the 100-day plan, uh, was very thorough and, um, uh, impressive. And anything else that kinda stood out to you?
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
No. I, I was, I was excited in our, just about hour and a half that we spent with you, that time went by very, very quickly. Uh, but your ideas, your energy, uh, I'm excited, uh, for you starting here, and, um, I know you're gonna give us a few days before I should start data as well, so I, I can't wait, so thanks. That's one of the things to bring up, and, and so the next one will be, uh, transition days, the next resolution that I have on there is the transition day.
Right, right.
And, uh, I know in our group, cause I sat in with the coaches and, or no, I wasn't in with the coaches until the end, but it was very important that you were a teacher and a coach, because you get it, and you know where, you know, your coaches are coming from, so, uh, that was, uh, a big point with me.
Right on. Anything?
Well, I think, uh, the, uh, the point that you had two very important jobs of vice principal and athletic director, um, was pretty impressive. Having a full plate like that, now just get rid of the vice principal position. Hopefully, you know, you'll be able to really dig into, you know, be an expert there in that particular area. But always being able to, uh, reach out and help if you need to be.
That was something that, uh, the building administration really liked, is that if they did have, uh, a situation and, you know.
Joy brought that up specifically.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, so maybe I'll put you on the spot, can you, uh, tell our community, just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself, where you're coming from, just a little bit about you?
Yeah, sure, I want, first, I wanna start by saying thank you to all of you for giving me the opportunity to work in such a fantastic district. Um, I, I do have some firsthand knowledge of, uh, the excellence of Westlake City Schools with my wife being a teacher at Dover Intermediate. Um, and it was an opportunity that was honestly just too good to pass up, so I'm very excited, uh, to be a part of it, ready to get going right away. Um, I, I'm meeting with, uh, Mr. Woods on Wednesday after my school day and his. Um, and just kinda start mapping out a course of action here, uh, in the next few months while I, uh, transition out of Highland Local Schools to Westlake City Schools. So, um, a little bit about me, I've been at Highland for the last three years as an athletic director and assistant principal. Um, pretty much encompassing anything and everything throughout a school day that you could imagine. Whether it be evaluating teachers, getting fields ready for games, um, those are just some of the areas that I had to do during my current role, which, um, has helped me and prepared me for what, uh, Westlake City Schools has to offer. So, um, looking forward to get, getting through with that. I do have, um, I do have a little bit of a contract difference at Highland where I have vacation days. So like I was talking to Dr. Gaggen earlier today, I'll be taking all I have left of those towards, in the summertime, um, as I transition to, uh, Westlake and kinda get, um, the field of land and lay out and start introducing myself to as many people as possible.
So Jessica gets no vacation?
I don't know, we don't wanna shut you guys out, do you have one add?
No, I just wanna say welcome to the district, thank you.
They're excited to have you join the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so letter C is what, uh, Mr. Craft brought up, and, and giving Nick time, uh, 10 days to have him come in and actually transition. Uh, we'd like obviously him to work with Mr. Woods, connect with, uh, Mr. McGuire, and also, uh, Kerry Renziad, be able to come in. And, uh, so when it's time for him to officially begin, on, on August 1st, he'll be ready to go. Uh, letter D is a resolution to approve employment of classified staff members. Uh, we do have a few there for you to look at, um, and then some classified substitutes is letter E. Moving on to F, these are the spring supplementals, or a good number of them, uh, for you to review. We are also hiring an after-school tutor. Um, this will lead into a conversation that we have, we'll, we'll probably have letter about SRS fund, later about SRS funding, um, to be able to increase the amount of tutoring we're offering. And actually, you're gonna hear a lot about tutoring, I think, on the state level, because we're, we're starting to see the governor talk about that more, because the state also has SRS money uh, that they're looking to spend as well, so I think you're gonna see some, uh, either funds available or legislation come out, um, uh, requiring tutoring, but we are already getting rolling on that. We have, um, a couple of project link people to approve. Uh, the next one on here is letter I, which is, uh, camp, what says here, oh, that's camp link, that's a different one. Uh, so camp link, uh, handbook for, uh, the summer resolution. Now, this is the one I was talking, resolution to approve an overnight field trip for, uh, grade six students going to, I'm gonna mess this up. Camp, do you know this?
Oh, my, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, Home Midakota, um, thank you for that, in Newbury Township. This was, I do have Nick Miller here, um, do you wanna, do you wanna, sure, have him, do you wanna do a first and a second and do discussion, or do you wanna bring him up now and talk to him?
I'd like him to, bring him.
We have two Nicks in a row.
Yeah, I was gonna congratulate Nick, and once I found out he was a candidate, I was very excited based on his first name alone. He's gotta be a great guy. No, but, uh, Jessica works in my building, so, um, if she's any indication, we, we made a very good decision, so officially welcome. Um, so yeah, I am here to talk a little bit about, uh, our outdoor education. A little bit different this year, we've been doing outdoor education in Westlake at the intermediate level for over 30 years at this point. Um, long before I was in the district, but it's been, uh, a tradition for quite a while. Uh, over the last couple of years with COVID, we've run into, uh, a few challenges, uh, last year and this year. We typically, uh, take this event in the spring, or excuse me, in the fall. And in both instances, last year and this year, we delayed to the spring, hoping to return to our normal overnight format. Um, and unfortunately, due to, uh, staffing and, uh, scheduling, we were not able to take our traditional overnight trip, so we hosted, uh, Camp and Hop for a Day event. Um, with the support of our, uh, PTA, we were able to, um, look at some other options, and we, uh, we looked into actually our, our old camp, Mohican Outdoor School, which no longer exists. Uh, but we were able to find, uh, camp, Ho Midakota, which is new to me, I'm not as familiar with this camp. Um, but in meeting with our PTA and, uh, meeting with the executive director, uh, we are able to offer a very similar experience to Camp the Hop. And, uh, basically what that looks like is, uh, an overnight trip. We take our sixth graders on this trip, historically, we split the class in half, we'll do, um, half of, uh, the grade level Monday through Wednesday, the other half will, uh, take the trip Wednesday to Friday. Um, it is a, a big deal for our kids, we're looking at May 16th to May 23rd. Uh, trip is optional, it's not required for students. Um, we do have, uh, some kids that don't attend every year, and we have alternate schedule that they'll run through back at school. Uh, we do have staff that will be at camp to help supervise, but then we also have some staff that will need to stay behind to help supervise kids back at DIS. Um, we will also, um, what we'll be proposing is also to partner with our PTA, they're going to, uh, get some volunteers to help supervise the trip as well. And, um, actually, one, uh, parent will stay in, uh, the cabin, uh, and, uh, boys and girls cabins, uh, will have one parent stay in each of those cabins. Um, of course, uh, anyone that is on the trip would be background checked, any parent that volunteers would be background checked. And, uh, cost is approximately $110 per student. Um, we're still, uh, finalizing the details of that, uh, but it's, uh, very similar experience, a lot of fun activities. Uh, I would argue it's, uh, outdoor education is probably more important now than it's ever been. Screen, uh, get away from their screens and are able to work on 21st century skills, uh, team building, problem solving. Um, there's a lot of really fun activities that they do as well, uh, high ropes courses, rock climbing, kayaking, paddle boarding, just some really cool, unique outdoor opportunities for kids in addition to the, uh, team building activity. So, um, we're excited about the opportunity, it is an overnight trip, so that, of course, requires board approval. Uh, but we, we, in meeting with parents, this is something that they, uh, really wanna do, if, if we can. We've obviously missed out on a lot, a lot of opportunities the last two years due to COVID, and finding this camp, um, their ability to host us, we thought was a nice way to, um, uh, recreate that experience that our sixth graders in the past have been able to enjoy, so.
Questions?
Yeah, I have some questions, so, uh, first off, I'm really thrilled that we are trying to bring back the normalcy of the sixth-grade trip. We've got, the high schools just, I think they're coming back right now from Disney, eighth grades, planning to go to DC. I mean, I, these are great activities that need to be part of the education and bringing them back, it's fantastic. My biggest concern is, we're saying it's roughly $110. Parents have not been notified about this in conversations with a few sixth-grade parents, and we're giving them basically a month roughly. And yes, there are, we have a number of families that are very, um, fortunate to be able to easily write a check for 110 or more dollars. There are other families where this might be a struggle. I know historically, PTA has been able to offer some scholarship money, I don't know, you know, there's not gonna be a fundraising opportunity, cause it's just too short of a turnaround amidst the week.
Yeah, we haven't done, uh, we actually haven't been able to do the fundraising for several years now, um, so due to some, um, IRS required, yeah, requirements that we have to meet. This is, this is happening in a short timeline, um, and it's, you know, my meetings with PTA started like two weeks ago. So we, I haven't notified parents yet because we haven't, you know, I wanted to make sure that we were able to go on the trip before I sent anything out to parents. Um, so we're, I've got a meeting with the PTA tomorrow, and, and if, if, uh, it is board approved, we'll get that communication out this week.
Okay, my, my fundamental biggest concern is the, the, I know finances are very strained for a number of families in this, and I know some of them are very happy to say, hey, there's no way I can afford it, can I get a scholarship? There's then others that won't say anything, and they just won't send their kid.
Yeah.
And that's what concerns me the most, because while there are families that do choose to not send their children, it's, this is something that the vast majority of kids do attend.
For sure, and like I said, we will have, um, and, you know, alternate schedule, and we'll still have, um, we'll still have a schedule for any student that is unable to go. Um, our PTA is going to help us with scholarships, I know not all, um, parents may take us up on that, um, but those will be available for any students that have, um, that may, may be in need of that support. Um, and, you know, I guess the other thing I would say is for overnight trips, you know, when we were attending Camp Mohican, uh, the cost of the trip was like $235 for an overnight trip. And, um, with Camp and Hop, we were able to get that price down, and with, um, Camp Ho Midakota, um, it's been, we've been able to reduce that cost even more. We're gonna use district transportation instead of, um, instead of running, uh, coach buses, which we typically do, uh, and able to keep, in order to keep it as affordable as possible. So, um, like I said, this was really something that our parents were, uh, very interested in, and when we, when parents found out that we were unable to have our traditional overnight and hop trip, um, this was something that I heard a lot from parents is, you know, can we look at other options? Is there any way we can still provide a similar experience? And this was the best opportunity that I was able to find.
I understand, mostly it's that short timeframe for parents to pull together that money, and that's my biggest concern. Is there any issue with the busing, with Westlake, uh, providing the transportation? I know we've had some busing issues for some sports, um, particularly with baseball, and that is another question I wanted to ask with Westlake schools.
I think the issue when you have some of the busing is timing, yeah, so, uh, Mr. House, our transportation director, would work with.
And I've spoken with him.
Miller will, uh, already to schedule, you know, it may not, you may not leave at 8:00 AM. It may, you have to, might have to leave at 10:00 AM or something like that, uh, in order to get our routes in first. But the issues that we have with some of the sports are when we're requested to be somewhere, uh, which would require the district to have our buses leave before 3:30, and we're still using our buses to get our, uh, elementary students home.
Okay, mostly, wanted to ask that question, make sure that we didn't have that issue on top of it. And I'm for, so it's gonna be staff and parents chef running the trip?
Correct.
Okay. With parents, the last time, I mean, the last time we've had this kind of a trip where parents were, um, chaperoning, I know it was a limited number of spots, and there was a pool that ended up happening, I think that was with one of your kids, Sean?
For DC, I think.
Yeah, for the DC trip, I don't know how you're planning on handling, if you've got 75 parents who are saying, I'm happy to go chaperone a bunch of sixth graders, I'm not quite sure why they would wanna do that.
Yeah. That'd be a good problem to have. Yeah, you know, we're, I have a meeting scheduled with the PTA to kinda finalize that, cause we wanna get communications out soon. Um, so we're gonna use a signup genius, and, um, it is, you know, we've got, at camp, we've got groups going in a lot of different directions, so, um, and as I said, we've got eight different cabins the kids would be staying in, so that's a minimum of eight volunteers. So I think the concern from the PTA is maybe not getting enough support, enough volunteers, rather than having too many, but if we have too many, um, you know, if we, if we have a lot of parent volunteers, uh, we will, we will be able to, you, put a lot of people to work, um, and we'll be able to use quite a few volunteers. So I don't have the final details as to how we'll go through that group, but obviously, um, I am pl- planning a parent meeting with any volunteers that we do have. Uh, of course, we'll have to get them background checked, and, and they'll go through that process as well, so, um, uh, so yeah, that's, it's, it's, it's possible we could have too many, but that's a good, like I said, it's a good problem to have, and we need, we do need a lot of support with the trip, so we can use a lot of, a lot of hands.
Other questions from the board?
No, I was glad to see it returning, because I was at Mohican for three years, and, uh, I mean, a week at a time, and it's a fabulous experience for teachers as well as the students, so I'm really glad you're doing this.
I went to Mohican sixth grade.
You too, really? Yeah, that's right.
Did you?
Yes.
I, I believe, Mr. Miller, then, not so long ago, this was still a, uh, a, a day, uh, event for the students, was it that?
Yeah, well, we actually have expanded it a little bit, um, because we now have a day experience for our fifth graders. Uh, but the sixth grade has always been an overnight trip.
Gotcha.
So like I said, the, the last two years, we've had to kinda shift and just do the, the, uh, day trip.
Right.
Um, but we do want to, whether, whether or not it's this year, hoping it's this year, um, but next year definitely, we want, wanna return to our traditional format.
I just applaud you for making it happen, um, as you put resources together with PTA, if you find that there's a need, will you, um, will you consider reaching out to the board if you come up short?
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other items for Mr. Miller? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, original Nick. Like the things, red shirts with the circle. Uh, okay, so, uh, letter K, we have a couple contracts, one from the United Cerebral Palsy Association of Greater Cleveland, and the second one from Reaching New Heights. Um, and then we have, uh, two amendments to resolutions, we're, we are mending, um, resolution 21-289, changing Jason Hall from winter and spring faculty manager, two-thirds contract to one-third contract. And then, uh, the next one is changing, um, amending resolution 22-60, changing Thomas Bowles from assistant boys track coach from 100% to a 50% contract. Those are my recommendations. If the board is comfortable doing for A separate and having for B through M together, is that okay?
Why don't we do for B separate?
I like that idea.
But we could do for B separate. Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation for A?
So move?
Second.
Discussion.
Thanks to everybody that gives us donations.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, thank you to our generous community. Further comment? Brocall?
Lizinski?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Kurnav?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation for B naming Mr. Faska and Mr. Renell?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Welcome aboard, Nick.
Absolutely.
Thrilled to see Mr. Faska coming back, Richard.
Thank you.
You're joining a great administrative team.
Further discussion? Brocall?
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kurnav?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation for C through for H?
So move.
Through for? I'm sorry, for M?
For M, so move. Second.
Discussion. Brocall?
Just for clarification, this is superintendent's recommendations for C through for M. Stoll?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Kurnav?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have a second hearing of the public. As an opportunity to address the board on any issues. Anyone care to approach the board at this time? And move on to informative reports and recognition. So we can, it says superintendent's report and treasurer's report. Todd and I are going to jump in and do a report together. Now, one of the things, what I like about this is we take pride in transparency and having conversations openly as board. And when we started having questions about ESRS funds and talking about permanent improvement funds, thought this would be a good opportunity to just go through and, and do it on Zoom in front of everybody. And just kind of have a conversation about what we have been doing with permanent improvement, what we have been doing and what we plan on doing with ESRS funds as well. So we'll just take a little time and go through that, which then can lead to other conversations. As we have, so let's start with ESRS. ESRS, geez, education, elementary, secondary, school, emergency relief, okay. There is the ESRS acronym. We, this is broken into three different grants. So there was ESRS one that we received a while ago for $327,572.
We've accessed.
What's that for?
I was just wondering, instead of me reading it, if it can be presented?
We don't, we don't have like, we didn't put together a slide deck with it. But we, we can go through it. We, we do have some like ESRS three and where we are with a spreadsheet of what we're spending. The, that first ESRS was spent to offset teacher salary. That would have likely been, if we would have reduced, like if we would have laid off classified staff or certified staff during that time because we were not in session. That's where ESRS one was utilized. ESRS two was one and a half million dollars. That was a big part of that over, I would say, half of that was launching our one-to-one initiative as well as things like Gaggle, ClassLink, and what other tech, and other tech supplies that I think put up to like almost $700,000. And when you look at what there, you can actually put up, Todd, what they were, they want us to spend ESRS on. And what we targeted in Westlake were four areas, closing gaps, mental health and wellness, technology and safety. Now, one of the reasons why technology is in it, because when, when schools had to go virtual, there were issues of, there were, there were issues of not having access to computers at home or they would have an access to a laptop, but then they would have to share. You'd have like three kids and one laptop, so we were lending them out. So one of the things that the state, but actually federal government encouraged was doing things to prepare so that this doesn't happen again. So if we, if we ever have to close again, do we have what's in place to continue to move forward educating students? That one, we, I'm trying to, where, with the, with the budget left in there, we're still working out.
ESRS two, so as Dr. Gagen started, ESRS one, we completely used funds, $327,000. That's already been done and moved through. That did save general fund those expenditures. So that money went back into the general fund pot. That would have happened not even this school year or this fiscal year, but last fiscal year, fiscal year 2011. So that's done it over.
We use that primarily for?
So at the time, when we were looking to make decisions on what we would do when we were looking at extended closures and not sure how a school year would open.
Right.
The ultimate argument was that in lieu of reducing staffing specifically at the elementary school, specifically in the specials area, where we weren't sure how we were going to do specials. How do you do, you know, gym class with masks and social distancing? How do you do art, you know, in those different types of things? So we used that fund to offset the staffing, to maintain the same staffing levels at the elementary specials. ESRS two, which is at 1.4, 1.5 million dollars.
Right.
That has been broken up into a couple of different areas. And right now, it appeared, we, we've fully spent about 1.1, 1.2 million of that, meaning the money has been utilized and has been expended, it's gone. And like Dr. Gagen said, you know, about over half of that was for our implementation of one-to-one technology. But we also use that for PPE. We had PPE supplies to start the school year. We've. Excuse me?
Gaggle was a part of that.
Gaggle is part of that. We have a number of different pieces that we've used. We've also used that to offset some salaries. When we both, we took a halftime teacher at the high school to do some math tutoring and made them full-time. So half of their salary is charged to ESRS. We also added the position of ESRS oversight with Mr. Wilson. So part of his salary has been charged for the year. If you do remember, we did ask Mr. Wilson to head up the middle school for the first couple of months. Those were charged, those couple of months were charged general fund, but the rest of the year has been charged to ESRS.
Okay.
So we have some, we have some salary and benefit costs that are hitting the ESRS fund. We are also looking at using ESRS funds to cover our SROs, the school resource officers. In the past few years, we've used the student wellness and success funds, which was a separate fund put together by Governor DeWine. That money has now been rolled into our standard foundation funding, which is reduced from where it used to be. So instead of having that money, that expense of $80, $85,000 get picked up by a general fund, it is an allowable expense, is a safety expense within ESRS. So we're, we're charging that off to ESRS as well.
I, I mean, it's trapped, but this actually brings up a point for me that we're always going to have SROs in the schools. It's not, it's not for the next two years that we're going to be paying for.
Right.
We're going to be paying for them until we either get another grant or the city decides, hey, you guys, you guys, you don't have to worry about it, we'll cover the costs. So I'm not quite sure why we're using the ESRS funds for that as a particular example. I'm sure there may be the other ones, but that's a real perfect example as to why. I know we can use it for safety, but we're just setting ourselves up for being surprised, so to speak, in, in year three. Be like, oh yeah, we got to pay for ESRS now, or we're going to pay for SROs.
Well, does the city pay anything?
Oh, yeah, they do. Yeah, we have, we have, it's a huge deal for us. We pay $80,000 for five officers.
Yeah, for, yeah, it's fine.
The city gets grants.
Yeah, right.
Well, they have a lot more places of revenue than we do.
And I believe the initial, one of the initial interests is of course for safety, having those officers in the buildings, obviously. But the governor's funds that are now part of the state funding, which of course is reducing. So I, I think, I don't know if this is an answer for you or not, but it's the way that I understand it is that we have to figure out how to pay for it. Some of those funds are coming from the state, we're getting less from the state. We have ESRS funds available. And it's an appropriate use.
Well, well, if, if, if a future, it'd be, well, it's part of general.
It'll go back into, it'll go into.
Right, I, I understand that. I was just saying is that today we're using it to offset general fund dollars.
So do you think we, you think we should spend the general fund dollars instead of the grant money?
We're going to, we had SROs before.
Right.
We use grant money.
We have it, and we have it afterwards.
Correct.
State funding is always going to change.
Right.
Every time, every couple of years it changes. So if it changed, we have to react to that. This is one, he's, as, is brought up many times, this is one-time money.
Right.
So I, I just have a concern that we're paying for things that would normally come out of the general, general fund with ESRS dollars versus specific things. And I don't know, I don't have any examples, but I'm just saying, that's, that's just me as relates to.
Yeah.
If I'm sitting, if we're sitting down in two years looking at our next budget or we're looking at our forecast for the next two, three years, you know, it's small things like this that we have to make sure that we remember.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Well, and, and to that point, you know, I've had conversations with Mr. Wilson, Dr. Gagen already. As we look at these positions that we're utilizing ESRS funds for, you know, right now we have it broken out in the, in the spreadsheet that's up on the screen is we have 22, 23, 23, 24. We're going to be adding another column and it's 24 and beyond, okay? And there are some of these things that will fall off after two years, okay? It's targeted interventions, it's for using this money, it's for a specific amount of time. There are other ones that do have great value that we're going to want to continue on. The reason we're going to have that column is as I prepare the five-year forecast, we then take that and we add that to the forecast because we know exactly when it will start hitting the forecast. And then we can carry it forward in, in that decision-making. It is something that we're trying to be as cognizant as possible of to make sure that we don't have a, oh wow, you know, we, we, the money's run out, now we have a big hit on, on general fund. It is something that will be planned and is a active conversation as we talk about these positions and, and how to add them and, and what they're going to do.
Well, it, just to add on to that, I mean, I guess that, that is, brings up another question is, what is the impact of maintaining some of the, the new services, I'll just call it, that we're adding to the schools?
Such as?
That are obviously going to continue on into the future.
Like social worker, would you say, or?
I have no idea.
We, we added one-to-one, you know, computer.
Right.
And I think if you remember back in, in our conversation, I believe it was October of 20, when we sat at the Parkside Cafeteria and we had some conversations about one-to-one and, and the implementation and all of that type of stuff. You know, it's, we, it is not sustainable under the PI fund as the PI fund was created, okay? And so the board gave me the directive to budget up to $500,000 on a general fund for those capital expenditures, including technology. So you will see on my five-year forecast, I carry each year going forward about $575,000, $575,000 in capital expenditures because I was directed by the board to spend up to a certain amount. Now, we haven't had to yet because we have the ESRS dollars that, that have come in. We were able to pay for the initial implementation with ESRS two. We're looking at, on, on the sheet here, there is a technology piece. We're looking at the next two years as we continue to, we'll have the need to refresh some of the older Chromebooks that we had reused. We didn't buy all brand new across the district. We had some in the district already. We used those, we bought, you know, some new, we use some old. As we look to refresh, we're able to refresh for next two cycles using ESRS funds as well because there is a drop dead date on these ESRS funds. And that is roughly June 30th of 2024.
And tell me what the drop dead date means.
The money has to be expended, has to be used.
Completely. Use it or lose it.
Use it, yeah. So, so this will allow us to refresh now going beyond 2024. That's again, in this case, in that column there, moving beyond, I, I am under the assumption that we will be continuing one-to-one. I think it has value, I think the district finds it of value. And therefore we would then say, okay, now we're going to use general fund dollars to support this, you know, purchase on an annual basis.
Not to be the flying ointment, but we just instituted one-to-one, right? Just this year?
Yes.
This school year. So I, I guess that would be the thing, your, your comment, I just is, is, I don't want to assume that it's going to be a, a great wonderful experience for all of our students to have a Chromebook. You know, that this is, this is a great technology that they should have. We know most of them have technology in home, this is. And I understand there's technology in the class that they want to use as well. But we're making an assumption that this is going to be a, a game changer or winning, great winning strategy for us to be able to go forward with.
One-to-one?
Yeah.
And I, I think about how Dr. Gagen engaged us in conversation with regard to one-to-one, that the, one of the importance of one-to-one is to have it be a vehicle specifically for education, specifically for academics, specifically for the classroom. And to use that tool for that purpose. And we consciously, I believe, made the decision that we'd eventually go one-to-one for that reason as opposed to students getting their own. You have the BYOD, big BYO.
Yeah.
To your point that I agree with is that if we go through and we find that it's not effective, you don't keep doing something just because you did it.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I don't, but, but, but a little bit earlier, one of the things we tried to balance when, when you were saying we need to be cognizant of these costs as we move forward.
Oh, yeah.
And so when, like when you go for a grant, if you were to go for a competitive grant, when you write it, they ask, you know, two questions. What do you need to start it up? And then how are you going to sustain it when we stop funding it? So that's the way we approach things. And when, like Todd said, the board had indicated, instructed him, set aside a half million dollars, up to a half million dollars for technology. Well, you know, instead of taking that half million dollars and drawing down our general fund, we said, well, this is actually something that's appropriately covered under ESRS. So let's utilize ESRS funding. So we are looking at it. And if it turns out that it's not beneficial and it's not worth the $300, we can stop it.
And that was, I think it's really.
It's not like a Supreme Court justice where they're there forever, you know, it's, it's a Chromebook.
I think Todd.
I feel unloved at this point.
But no, I, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to be misconstrued. The one, one-to-one, as an example, I think is a great utilization of the ESRS funds. It's definitely going to help students, especially, and the teachers all be on the same platform in class, you know, being able to keep those students focused versus, you know,
Sure.
opening up another, another page and doing appropriate things that they should do. So my mind is, we need to really make sure what are the things that we're going to commit to? Or at least we're thinking of committing to going out. Because I, I, again, as Mr. Hapkin said, you know, where there's going to be a 24, 25 and so forth. I, I, I hope that we're not seeing another million or $2 million in these, in these things because I don't know how we're going to pay for it.
Correct. Yeah, so we also have Paul and Amanda. At some point, we'll call you guys up because I know you guys have had these conversations. So if either of you want to come up and join in, you can.
I'm going to rewind for, for one second here.
I asked a question about, okay, because you mentioned mental, mental health and wellness. How much time have our counselors or that, what do we call them?
School counselors.
Okay, school counselors spent on, and I know that it's been a trying time for, you know, everybody and our students have been affected and they need a lot of.
Guidance.
Yes. Yes, um. How much time have our our counselors put towards that and not being able to do what they're regular, what they regularly do? You know, their regular job. Do they have, do they have time to do what they normally do? Or are they spending all their time on post COVID issues? Am I, am I, am I making myself clear? I'm not, I know.
No, no, they they, yes, they they spend a lot of time. When you talk to the counselors and Stephanie, actually, I think I've met recently with all of the counselors as well. Um, they spend a lot of time dealing with a lot of mental health issues. Um, and you will notice as you go through, even on the student services tab, we're trying to address some of those. Uh, be it with additional counseling, social workers and things like that, but just try to help some of that, which is one of the main reasons that we are approved to. Spend SIR funds, so.
Something that I know elementary, uh, because they have had so many students that they now had to work with individually as opposed in the past. Uh, they have not been able to run as many small groups as they would like to. Um, you know, some of some of those groups that we like to get into the forefront, you know, before it becomes very proactive instead of reactive. Um, but they have had very trying couple of years and a lot more students to work with than they than they typically have. So. You know, a great way to use users is to help that. We know we have students with needs. We have incredible school counselors and they are working very hard. And they're combining groups of multiple grade levels, which might not be as effective as it has in the past, but at least they're still doing something. We've now tried to figure out a way to use SRS funds to make sure that we are in no way. Um, in backing off what we've done in the past, but instead just adding to it.
Even our even our Belfair counselors are, they need support. I mean, we have waiting lists at schools. Um, even to your point, Amanda, uh, in talking with the middle school counselors, Saskia and Adina. They're worried because they spend so much time on the mental health that a lot of the things, you know, that they work with Kevin and Tom on. Um, they're trying to make sure that they do that after hours because they're so concerned about just getting students in the school to make sure that they're okay uh to go about their day.
And that's one of the reasons why you look at this year, we have social worker times one. And and they're looking, one of the the things that they're looking at is social worker times two. Uh, to be bring another social worker on board.
Kind of K six, seven, twelve. And our counseling teams are excited about that.
So I'm gonna rewind real quick and and one of the documents uh that we have here for for you to look at. Um, is, you know. Uh, Esther, and I'll just state it publicly, Esther, when it came out was the wild, wild west. Um, schools were doing all kinds of things, cities, states, there was just all over the place. People were doing, uh, uh, there was very little guidance. Given direct uh 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 initially. Um, this is now directly from ODE. ODE has, this is for S R two. There's also one for S R three. Uh, I think when we looked this up, it was, uh, it just been. Uh, updated here in March of this year again. And so we look and and ultimately. Look for a list of what um can uh. What can this be used for? Okay, so what are the authorized activities for SRT? So of course, you know, basically, uh, any activity other authorized under other federal school laws is allowable, uh, whether it's title or or things of that nature. Uh, coordinate preparedness uh in response efforts of the LEA, which is the local education agency, educational agency. With the state as well as other uh. Public health departments and relevant agencies to prevent, prepare for and respond to COVID nineteen. Uh, activities to address the needs of low income students, students with disabilities, English learners, racial, ethnic minorities, students experiencing homelessness, foster youth. Uh, we also have development implement procedures and systems to improve the preparedness and response. Efforts of the LEA, training and PD for staff of LEA and sanitation and minimizing spread of infectious disease, purchase supplies to clean. Uh, and sanitize that your PPE. Planning for and coordinating law during long term closures, meals, technology, IDA, things like that. Um, purchase educational technology, including hardware and software for students. Um, we have provided mental health services and supports. We have planned and implement summer learning and supplemental after school activities. Addressing learning loss. Uh, this is where we're talking about some of the tutoring, things like that. School facility repair and improvements to enable the operation of schools to reduce risk of virus transmission. And exposure during environmental health hazards and support student health uh needs. Inspection, mate, uh, testing, maintenance, repair, replacement, upgrade projects to improve indoor air quality. Um, we have the provide principals and other school leaders who are necessary to address their individual schools and then other activities necessary uh to continue after the continuity of services. These are our guidings, you know, this is our guidance from ODE on on what we can do. The, you know, the intent of SIR. Um, is to was a response to the pandemic. And a response to uh uh continuity of education during the pandemic. Um, S R three is very similar to these guiding guiding documents, except uh its main focus was getting kids back into school. Uh, so S R two, you know, happened when there was still up in the air about school. I think we might have even been in hybrid at the time. Uh, when S R two was, uh, uh, I think in December of twenty twenty it was passed. Uh, S R three, as the new president came in in uh January of twenty one. Um, you know, there was, um, uh, S R three was passed and it was a focus of getting kids back into the school building. So. As we look at our pieces of what we're spending S R on, uh, we go specifically to these guidance documents. And have conversations about, you know, does this fit in there? Does it not fit in there? Um, you know, how does it fit in there? Additionally, we have to submit a a budget to the state through the CCIP, uh, continuous. Uh, I can't think of the proven plan, but um it's, I'm missing one of the Cs there. Comprehensive, I think, comprehensive, but that's a state, um, um. System that we go into that that, uh, actually the three staff, Amanda and Paul oversee grants uh within the CCIP. And they added S R in there. So we have to go in and submit a budget of how we're going to spend it. And they break it down with salary, benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, and then capital outlay. And then they break it down additionally with uh instructional, uh, you know, instruction, support services. Uh, family and community engagement, professional development. Uh, there's a few more that I'm missing in there, uh, but. Um, we have to go through and say, okay, if we're doing tutoring, that's going to be an instructional and we're going to use our staff. So that's a salary. A salary and benefits for our staff of in instruction. And so that goes through a process to for to be approved as well. Um, because it was the wild, wild west of initially, the state came back and said. Hey, any and all capital improvements have to be pre-approved uh by the state before you can can do it now. Um, if if uh there are some, uh, if you do a search for misuse of SIR funds.
Get there.
Um, yeah, I I I can bring that up um in a minute, but um there's like, we had one that I can I can show here from the hill dot com with. The misuse of uh SIR funds and and they point out specifically. Is on. Sorry. Um, so school districts are wasting COVID relief funds. Uh, you know, they call out specifically in here. I apologize, uh, but they call it out. You can kind of see at the bottom here, uh.
You can click the X there, can't you? Is there? It's covered on my screen.
Um, so you can see right in here, um. But as the massive increase in available funds and insufficient oversight has led to many school districts throwing money at projects unrelated to recovering from the pandemic. And they uh point out two specific ones that sports facilities and urban birth sanctuary. Uh, uh, again, it's one of those that the uh, uh, it was initially. The wild, wild west, they've cracked down, the federal government has cracked down extremely on it. Ohio specifically has cracked down significantly on it as well. And that's where we keep going back uh to this, uh, or I'll bring up in this case, S R three. Uh, this guy, guy, uh, guidance document. So this was just updated uh about two weeks ago. Uh, for S R three. So. Paul and Amanda and and Steph, uh, the administrative team here look to make sure that we can, it it's allowable under S R. So. This is why we're 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 choosing what we're choosing to charge into S R, uh, because it does fit uh under the allowable expenditures of of S R.
Being allocated to Westlake and S R three.
S R three is about three point three million.
Okay.
So I mean, overall, we're talking five.
A little over five million.
A little over five million dollars and we'll, I mean, which, yes, it's one time money, but it it's a decent chunk of change.
Substantial money.
It is, and it's really over three to four years.
Correct. It, what I would ask is, this is great. Can we do a slide deck showing very clearly what this funds have all gone to? And I think this is important to reporting out to the community so they understand that we don't have an urban birth sanctuary that we built someplace.
Or new uh baseball fields.
Do you, do you want to ask them? I mean, they're here. Do you want to mention anything about just? What thought process behind or?
No, I was just at, um, Miss Rock, keep the screen again, uh, where you had SRS student services.
Same as school just to get the same amount. No, it's different based off of title and enrollment and a whole bunch of things, but there's a lot of school districts that I know that have used this. To pick up general funding gaps, not only in Ohio, but state or nationwide. Because I've been fielding phone calls from friends, trying to help them figure out what happened to their funds. Um, California, actually, uh, but it's just one of those where I think it's important to. Communicate where the money went in in regards to Mr. Fenukan's comments, you know, especially things that we plan to continue. Um, you know, making sure that it's clear to communicate so we know what funds we're going to need to pick up. Which while in an ideal world, we would love to say that mental health is suddenly going to get significantly better in two years. I don't necessarily think that's gonna be the case. But it'd be sad if we had to take away the additional support that we've been able to add.
And and I think to your point, um, the conversations I've had with Dr. Goggins as well as, um, Mr. Hopkins. Um, when I look at the overall list, if I were to say. Things that would jump into that twenty four and beyond list would probably be, uh, we're hopeful that the social worker piece. Will make a big difference. We're hopeful that in the first, uh, in academic services that the. The mental health supports that we're looking at at the specific uh buildings will continue and make a difference. So those, those are the two biggies that um we're looking to continue.
But we think we can drop, we're hopeful that we can drop, uh, our credit recovery because we do have high school kids who got behind. And so as we catch people up and as kids come in in the eighth grade, you know, um, in a couple of years, we're hopeful that that's one that can go away. Um, but right now it's needed and I don't know.
Exactly. We're looking at those academic gaps and the the goal, and we know that students will struggle for for a while more than what we've seen. But the goal is that in three years, we don't have to have six tutors in one building just to help kids catch up those gaps. That we don't have to have, um, for all, you know, students, exact path logins for the summer for them to be doing summer work. And we can instead just say, but let's go play football, you know, let's go play. Um, you know, the goal is that we catch these students up with SRS funding. And then we can, we can choose what we decide to keep, but it doesn't feel like such a dire need. It's more a let's do this because it's good practice and it's a good thing to do for students. But not all because we have a hundred kids at a farm. You know, it, the goal is to use SRS to close the gaps that we don't need all of this.
And and we've seen some success, uh, be it at the high school with the half position started this year. Um, in a, at Mr. Miller's building at this, um, they now have two tutors, one of which I believe was approved. Uh, for math. So they're finding, uh, they're working together as a team. That's going to carry into Burnison. And if you look at the list. There's potentially up to twelve tutors and those are tutors. Those are our teachers with targeted specific uh things that they'll be working on. With our students to close those gaps. That's the goal.
And again, while we have the funding, you know, there are certain things such as uh making sure that in some of this PD that we normally wouldn't be able to afford some of this. And we are bringing specialists in specialty areas to make sure that our teaching is also where it needs to be. Because our teaching has to change a little bit right now in order to accommodate for these gaps. And our teaching will probably look a little bit different now going forward because of these gaps. So we have the funding to provide the training to our teachers to make sure that they're well equipped to handle the students in the classroom. You know, the goal again there is to do, make sure we we give them whatever continuous PG they need to keep those skills up, but not to this level, you know, it was the SRS ones. We're trying to plan so that the end of SRS.
Right, yeah, right. Other question.
I'm just on that slide there. Uh, I have a question. Trying to pick up my cap so it's not to be. Mess. This on the school nurse uh point right there. I I know it's a. Our request for it's actually that you're you're planning a budget for the school nurse. Is that an additional school nurse or is that a current school nurse?
We added a third nurse in COVID, uh, so we have one on each campus.
Okay.
Which is good. That's in place to continue that third position.
Okay.
Even when SRS runs out.
We'd have to talk about it when SRS runs out.
Okay, okay. And I guess that's again, I I I could, you know, you know, I mean, I could belabor. If we go all night here, um, but I won't.
Should we let their analysis lead now?
What? Building out to uh list comments, what what would be beneficial would be is. Say, say we spent a hundred thousand dollars uh SRS funds for, um. Salary benefits and and health insurance so that we didn't lay off drivers, we didn't lay off. You know, a lot of our classmates staff, which I think was a a fantastic decision that we did. Um, so as not to impact our staff, um, any more than than possible. I know that normally that those dollars would be in our general fund, but we paid, we paid for it out of, out of SRS. Which tells me then we already had that money budgeted in the general fund. So. If I, if I take a hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund of an expense and I pay for it with SRS. Then my general fund expenses should be down a hundred thousand. But.
That's a true statement.
Okay, so with that as an example. What I'd like to see is what we spent on SRS. Would it normally come out of? Um, our general operating budget or is it truly a one time? Or is this a new service, a a new? Element that we're we're planning on keeping. And and then how are we going to pay for that?
Sure.
Going forward, because again, it would five point one million dollars over over a couple of years. Uh, that is a lot of money and it has a weight and it can impact a lot of different things. And so. It's not that I'm looking for justification. I just want to know.
Sure.
How the money is is flowing and how it's being impacted. You know, I I think my my salary benefit is a good example of such. Um, if there was a new, a new nurse as well, I would almost say maybe that shouldn't be part of S R. If if we stick to your any needed, it should be part of general fund. But I I get it. Um, we're gonna use it for this, uh, see the next couple of years and then we'll make a decision. In in the next couple of years, but again, it's gonna be one of those things that. I I did before, I mentioned before is that. You know, like the eighty thousand, oh, we're gonna have to have another eighty eight thousand for a nurse. Well, we're gonna need another, you know, hundred thousand for this. We're gonna. I I'm just afraid that we're we're using the SRS money for things that we're gonna con- continue to do. And then in two years or three years, we're gonna be like, ah, shit, we're gonna have to cut all of this stuff or a lot of this stuff. Um, or make some other hard decisions. So I I just want to make sure, um, that we're not in that position because I'm gonna be here three. Um, I hope. So. That, you know, that's that's my, my soapbox for today.
Okay, that analysis is, uh. Doable and we could see such an.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we we have detailed uh uh reports of every purchase order that's been made out of S R funds. Um.
But the analysis that Mr. Fenu.
We've, yeah, we can go through it. We'll work together and go through it and make those determinations on whether it, um. Uh, is relieving general fund or if it's, you know, something new. Uh, and then if it's something new, is it something that we view as being long term or if it's just a for a fixed time?
Yeah.
Yeah, fixed time during, uh, using this money only and not, and we have a commitment not to carry on.
Yeah, these, the the are, I'm assuming the number of uh one time items that we're looking. You know, the air handling in this building is a good example. If there's, there are some one, one time fees that are going to be out there. So it would just be. It'd be great for clarity to see every single one of those so that if we are going to be making some decisions. I like to get the skill, the school nurse and and social services, you know, but if that's, if that's. Where we think we really want to do, we may have to either go to the. You know, go to the voters and ask for more money or make other hard decisions.
Yeah, I, you know, the the, to the point that that John had made regarding relieving general fund of money. Um, you know, what we have tried to do with all of our grant funds, um, over, you know, years, um, we try. Um, we try to protect general fund as much as we can. General fund is our operating, you know, uh, expenditures. And, uh, that's where we run all of our day to day activities out of, that's where we pay everyone. Uh, uh, out of that, that's our, our, our tax base that comes in, uh, to, uh, pay for the district. Um, when we are able to relieve things of general fund, what that does ultimately is helps us continue to keep our ending balance as high as possible. And that, uh, and and why do we want that? Is that keeps us off the ballot longer and longer. So, um, you know, as we've run the past several years, uh, at surplus and able to continue to build our, uh, uh, our, I call it the cookie jar, um, you know, at some point here, uh, you know, we are going to be running out of deficit. And we'll talk a little bit more in in May as we do our five year forecast, have some better numbers. But our finance committee meeting was, you know, going over some of this, you know, this year could be, you know, right around break even for us. Uh, depending on how things play out, you know, uh, between now and the end of the year. But, uh, we're going to be surplus and we're going to be deficit spending here. And then that that bottom line that we've built up, that cookie jar that we've built up, will then start the, you know, chipping away. And as decisions are made in the district, um, ultimately, we want to look at each decision and prioritize. And when we say, okay, uh, we want to keep these positions, you know, long term. What, you know, when I say prioritize, what do I mean by that? I, what I mean is, you know, that will have a cost, a really an opportunity cost. That will happen when you're spending X number of dollars here, what else could you have been doing with that money? The opportunity cost, so therefore, one of the things that you could be doing with it is not going on the ballot as soon. So, um, as we make those decisions, we will have to look at how that impacts when the, uh, the, the, the board ultimately, uh, chooses to go onto the ballot. Or or I recommend to the board that we go on the ballot. Um, you know, we've been, uh, very, very fortunate in the district not to, uh, uh, go, not to pass operating money since two thousand and six. Um, and I'm not saying that we're going to be on the ballot or I'm not even pretending to recommend something for, you know, this November. Uh, because we are right around that, we're not deficit spending yet, so there's no real need or significant deficit spending. So there's no real need to be on the ballot. But the decisions, when we look at it, we have to look at and say, okay, if we do A, okay, we're going to have to give up B, C, D, or or whatever it is. Um, or we can have our pie and eat it too, but that will just put us on the ballot in a much quicker fashion. So those are the decisions that we'll have to make ultimately.
I I guess my my last, and I agree a hundred percent. Uh, the one last thing I would just say is, uh, oh shit, I forgot.
We can go back to it.
Well, let's talk about.
Any other?
Yeah.
We're going to talk about PI, I, because I, that was the next one.
And, um,
Oh, I, I know, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, no, it it was, the one last point on this, I was going to say is that, um, ideally, if we're able to put those, all of those funds towards, uh, more closely one time or one time periods. You know, because I think the idea right behind the funds was to get the students, um, back where they should have been. Uh, because of COVID, uh, both maybe socially, uh, and and academically. And then obviously prep ourselves as well in case there's another one. Is, chances are there's going to be another one, maybe, maybe not next year, but maybe in another couple of years or so. We just don't, so and I and I think investing in those things as well. So I, again, for me, I just don't want us to spend the money in a fashion that we think it's always going to be coming, and I know we're not.
No, yeah, we agree with that.
Yeah, and and I know we're not.
Absolutely.
So that's where, um, that's where, where a lot of my thoughts are coming from. So it'll be great to be able to look, look at that, uh, report and then also look at, you know, how we want to spend, um, the balance for the next couple of years. So we haven't been very frugal about it, because, you know, considering you got five million, we've only spent about half of it.
Less than at this point, uh, uh, actual spent less than, uh, we do have some encumbrances and stuff, but yes, you're damn right.
All helpful, right? All right, super. Do you want to move on to? PI, let's talk about PI. Um, the first thing when, and Todd and I spent some more time on this today. And even look back to our talking points back from the levy, uh, and and do you have that slide? We even got to watch our video, which was kind of fun, I don't remember.
Was Todd in it?
No, that was a little cartoon video.
Oh.
Is it the Little Panthers?
No, 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 oh, we'll show you the video again, if you want to. Um, and one of the things that, that we highlighted there, and the talking point is we went out to, um, campaign was, uh, the statement there saying also create a separate maintenance fund for capital expenses, including safety, security, technology updates, transportation needs and building maintenance. So as we went out campaigning, that's what we were saying is that, and even when you should, we'll look at the one twenty-one video, it says, you know, transportation, um, maintaining the buildings, uh, and and the different things like that. Um, and then, you know, the, uh, Todd's been keeping track of what we have spent PI on. And you have a spreadsheet there. And this is, this is all, right, everything that we've
This is, yeah.
Spent.
Next time print that out.
Uh, I can tell you, I mean, that's.
Said next time print it out.
Yeah.
You could, you could get it.
Or or email it just.
You want a hard copy in your inbox?
Uh, yeah, inbox.
Yeah, we do. Hard copy, you know?
Sure.
That includes.
One email, email, right?
Yeah, email.
You know?
They'll kill any more trees than we have.
So when you go through the different things that we've spent and and the total on it so far in spending has been, uh, what, six point eight, seven, two million, is that what we have?
Yes, that's what we've, we've spent, uh, now I did take the liberty of putting on the bottom of this list. You'll see that does include, uh, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Holly Lane, uh, coming down. We haven't formally entered into that contract yet, but we have, you know, we are working on the, uh, uh, with, uh, contractor.
Holly Lane's part of the six, eight, seventy-two.
Yes, sir. Yep. So, uh, right now, when you look at the two, that leaves us, uh, uh, in our general fund, I'm sorry, in our PI fund, we have about five hundred thousand dollars for me. Um, we did meet in our finance committee meeting and and one of the things that we've talked about in PI is, is having set asides and and building set asides. And, um, you know, I I wanted, you know, the reason I bring it up here tonight is, is because I think when we talked about it the other day, I caught, uh, Mr. Craft and Mr. Finnegan off guard. Uh, when, you know, at at this point, uh, you know, six years in, uh, or so in in collections, uh, we have not established those set aside, Jim. Okay, we've not put any money, uh, you know, away for long term projects like roof repairs or window replacements, things like that.
And as a board, we made that decision, we'd, we'd like to see that set aside cash there available for future stuff.
Correct. And so, and and the reason for that, that's not, and and we can look through the this list here. That's not because we're choosing to spend the money frivolously, okay? Uh, one of the main things that we've done is that we've made the decision is, we could have let, uh, uh, Dover and Basset and Holly Lane sit there for ten years.
On that Dover.
Well, but but I'm just saying in in general, you could let your building sit there. And what we have seen even in the past, uh, a couple of years that they've been sitting there, you know, vacant since the elementary school opened up, is we are dealing with, uh, uh, some, uh, break-ins, some, uh, some vandalism. Uh, and ultimately, the concern is blank in that neighborhood, that immediate neighborhood or or community. So we want to be good neighbors and say, hey, we don't want to have the building sitting there, uh, and and being damaged and getting boarded up. His windows break, get broken and things like that, uh, you know, we'll just take down the buildings and it to be, uh, to have a better relationship with our community. We want to hold on the property long term.
Yeah.
We're not selling the property, we're not, you know, anything like that.
The other thing is maintaining that. And then having that money, uh, because we're, we're getting to a position where, uh, fire systems, um, uh, as they're getting antiquated, you replace them just to keep it up. And and then the other one is, as you're dealing with vandalism or camera systems.
Like, what about liability if someone was in?
Right.
Yeah.
So, so that was some, that was a conscious decision in here, where about one and a half million dollars of this went to taking down those buildings.
And we, we talked about that.
Right, we may be.
And I think one of the items was, I think as a, as a group here, we knew that was going to happen. I think as fast as it happened, I think may have caught us, or at least it caught me a little off guard in retrospect.
Sure.
When, when you look at it, um, because of what we've had to spend over the last couple of years, so.
So when, when I went through and we can certainly go through every, uh, uh, piece, but what I did is I categorized each of these, uh, expenditures. And you'll see that, you know, in athletics, we spent, uh, almost a half million dollars, uh, in athletics, uh, uh, directly out of PI. Uh, we spent six hundred thousand dollars in in buildings and grounds. That includes, you know, uh, our trucks that we've had by, uh, plows for our equipment, that could be repairs to the building, uh, that's kind of a, a, the very broad, you know, category. Uh, debt repayment, if you remember correctly, uh, the board, uh, we opted to make an investment into Westlake Elementary School. And we did what's called manuscript debt of a million dollars out of, uh, uh, and backed it, uh, with the PI fund to pay it back. So, uh, we have a hundred thousand dollars a year that we're paying back in debt repayment, uh, out of the, uh, PI fund in order to, uh, buy those upgrades that we did at the elementary school. And, you know, this was as we got into value engineering with it, we made the conscious decision to buy aluminum windows instead of, uh, uh, aluminum clad wood windows. We made the conscious decision to upgrade to LED lighting instead of, uh, going with your traditional fluorescents. Uh, we made the conscious decision not to cut square footage in order to get underneath the, the, the budget cap. So we ultimately ended up, uh, spending about two million dollars, uh, and you'll see at that last, the one right above the total, the WES, uh, building project, so one point nine million dollars out of our PI funds were spent on those, uh, uh, on the building project to get the building that we wanted, uh, that will serve the community for fifty years or more. Um, but, uh, we have the demo of the buildings, so we did have a little bit of money left over in the, uh, building projects themselves. We were using those first for the demo of the buildings. The demos have averaged four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per building, so that really all told is closer to one point four million or so. But, um, uh, we have it as, uh, uh, hidden PI for about one point one. Uh, we did have to move into this, uh, building, and so we spent about three hundred thousand dollars, uh, prepping this building and moving into this building. Um, so that was charged here, we've had some safety and security expenditures, uh, but, uh, 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 radio, uh, repeaters, uh, handheld radios. We, we did, you know, it's one of those that, it's a, a great point that Dr. Goggins brings up is, you know, Basset, uh, uh, Elementary, unfortunately, uh, back, I think it was in twenty eighteen, we had to replace the fire alarm system to the tune of, you know, twenty or thirty thousand dollars. We didn't have a choice, we were still using the bill.
Sure.
And by law, we have to have a working, you know, a fire alarm system. So, um, you know, we made an investment in there.
Just making a point with that fire alarm system, before the building came down, we took it out and it's in David, David Kosovar's office. And we'll probably use it in here.
We're trying to see if, uh, if it can be certified.
Recycle, because.
Is there a working fire alarm in this building?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure one of the city to Dave's.
No, 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 there's a newer one.
The, the one in here is older.
Correct.
So we're, we want to try and use the new.
To add on to that, um, I know we've been very good about that, as like, especially with tech that we've pulled out of a lot of the elementary schools and repurposed up that stuff as well, so we've been very good.
We have. Yep, we've repurposed anything, uh, uh, that we can, uh, we have done auctions and sales. Uh, that's why when you look at our revenue side, you know, um, where it would be normally right around one point one million, almost exactly. You'll see in the, uh, uh, past couple of years, it's a little bit higher than that, and that's because of either insurance proceeds, okay? Uh, if there was insurance damage, we filed a claim, uh, or it would be, uh, uh, for we sold some property and, uh, any type of property that we sell, uh, personal property, so that's, uh, uh, if we sold, you know, desks from one of the buildings, or if we sold our old buses, you know, things of that, that we put back into PI.
Personal.
In personal properties.
And another, another bit of funding that went in is, if you look at that list, you'll see that the, the PAC stage, you know, the lift that was damaged. So it flooded. Now, we paid for it out of PI, but we received the insurance benefit and it went into.
Goes back in.
It went back into their proceeds.
Do you have footnotes on that report that talk about those add-ins or no?
Uh, no, not right now, you're looking exactly what what I have here, but I can't make.
That says a lot.
Yep, um, you know, and then we've had, uh, the other piece of that people don't understand is, uh, we are charged to collect taxes. So we don't collect taxes, the county collects taxes on our behalf, the county charges us for those, uh, taxes. We proportionally charge that amount to our three different funds, uh, that are, uh, uh, taxed, uh, revenues as generated by taxes, so that's general fund, uh, uh, bond retirement fund and PI fund. So, uh, we're charged a significant amount from the county to collect taxes, it proportionally gets broken up based on the amount of money that we collect.
Do we just, i- is that a conscious decision that we've just decided to break it up, uh, between the three funds, or are we required to do that?
Um, no, you're required to do that, i- it's, uh, that's a standard that you do though, because it is, um, you know, there is a cost for collecting that money, and if you weren't collecting that money, you wouldn't have that cost.
So before the PI, we really only had two.
Two, correct, yeah. But we weren't collecting PI money, so you were collecting less tax, uh, tax money. Uh, we have technology purchases that we've done, uh, over the, uh, past several years. This is, uh, nearly all of those technology purchases were done prior to, uh, ESSR funds being available. Um, and most of those have been for, uh, the backbone type.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah, not instructional, not, not direct instructional in a kid's hand, but your infrastructure that's needed to facilitate that. Transportation, you'll see that, uh, you know, we're going to spend a little over one point three million, uh, whether that be, uh, on buses or vans. Um, and then we, we talked about the building project. So when we look back at that issue one twenty-one and we say, okay, uh, capital expenses, safety, security, technology upgrades, uh, transportation and building maintenance. We have been spending, uh, our PI in the way that we had communicated out that we would. And, um, you know, and that's where, you know, uh, uh, but we've made some conscious decisions to speed things up like the, uh, tear down the, the demo of the buildings, uh, in order to, to be better neighbors.
Questions on the PI?
Yes, just out of curiosity, uh, the driveway out here, it, have we budgeted for that to be?
Well, so Mr. Kosovar, uh, presented to the board in finance committee meeting, um,
We didn't get to it.
The, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We talked about.
We talked about, yeah, his, uh, short term, uh, capital improvement list. So he put together this list here of things that may be considered in the next, uh, uh, eighteen to, or, uh, uh, twelve to eighteen months. So we have, you know, uh, uh, nearly at the top here, that the, uh, uh, building abatement for, uh, in that one Holly Lane. Uh, we've talked about baseball and softball fields, we've talked about, you know, the asphalt ceiling and striping, uh, at Dover campus. We have, uh, some bus cameras that are, we're asking, people have asked about replacing the bus cameras. Uh, we have building security camera replacement at DIS. Um, the locker room renovation, this does not include the locker room renovation. This is only a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for, uh, the roof replacement, you'll see in Mr. Kosovar's notes all the way to the right. Uh, the roof is the one thirty, the balance is to be determined right now, uh, on the locker room renovation. Our room renovation of DIS, um, as you're all fully aware, DIS is the building that is our oldest building right now. And while there was some upgrades that were done during the high school, middle school project, um, it has not had nearly uh, the, uh, level of upgrades that the other buildings have, uh, uh, enjoyed being new. Um, reception area at DIS, uh, uh, we need a new mower. Um, again, you know, it's kind of funny sometimes as we, we, we talk about different things. You know, I think a couple of years ago, I bought a new mower in my house, it was, you know, I think I paid for the premium Honda at like four ninety-nine. Uh, you know, this is a, a sixty thousand dollar mower, um, but instead of cutting. Was that Tesla Tesla? Not Tesla, Charnier. But instead of my mower that cuts all about twenty-two inches wide, uh, this is actually twelve feet wide.
Oh, my.
It has the big wings that drop, because we do have a lot of land that we need to maintain throughout the district. Our current one is a little over thirty years old right now, so it has served us well. Um, but, uh, it is time that the repairs are, are becoming more expensive than it's worth.
And that'll be able to be trailer, right?
Oh, yeah, they are, absolutely, yeah. So the sides come down, their wings, that's full up. Um, so you're able to drop those down, load it on a trailer and, uh, then drop the wings to them up.
Anything you want to mention with regard to buses and bus purchases?
So, uh, I appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, one of the things that you'll, uh, you would see on the list of PI expenditures that we've just entered into is we did receive a bus grant this year from the, from the C. Uh, now, we have received bus grants in the, in the past, and I'm not joking when I say this, I think one year it was eight hundred dollars, okay? Um, it, you know, we looked at and say, you know, it, it's not worth it for us, you know, we, we don't have the money budgeted, uh, uh, It it's not worth it for us, you know, we we don't have the money budgeted uh uh for it. It's not worth us to buy a a ninety thousand dollar bus and only get eight hundred bucks back from the state. Uh, this year they uh had far more funding available. And they identified us for uh the replacement of the maximum replacement of four buses. And they're funding us at forty-five thousand dollars a bus, which is roughly half the cost. So the four buses that we've identified for replacement are three uh conventional buses and then one uh bus with a lift for uh. Those special needs. So um, that will hit P I for about two hundred thousand dollars, but the grant will uh cover the remaining hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, cause the total purchase is about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. One of the pieces that, you know, was very eye opening for me is in order to uh. Qualify for this grant, the state of Ohio looked at all the school districts uh in the state. Somewhere around six hundred and thirteen school districts. I it fluctuates every now and then, but it's right around six hundred and thirteen. And um, they identified all the school districts that uh have buses that they consider old, okay? Now, their definition of old was uh eight years or older. Um, and ninety-six thousand miles or older, so roughly a hundred thousand miles and and eight years or older on that. Um, of that, uh, there were roughly three hundred, I'll say three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five. School districts that qualify for that, okay? So uh, so out of the six hundred and thirteen, about half of them have buses that qualify as old, okay? Um, they then additionally looked at and said, okay, how many buses do you have in your fleet, in your route? Day-to-day route fleet, okay? And then how many of them are old, okay? And so um, and then it came up with a percentage. And when you look at the percentage of your old buses compared to your overall fleet. We're in the top twenty-five schools in the state for the oldest buses. So, you know, we have a a, we have an old fleet. Uh, you know, part of that is we've not, you know, in order to maintain a twelve-year average, okay? So if we wanted to keep buses just twelve years, okay? That means we need to replace three buses a year. Okay, and that is not something that we've been doing. That's not something the district has been doing and. And as far back as I've pulled the records of our buses for the past twenty years or so, uh of courses, we've never done that. Uh, to average, you know, three buses a a year, but that's why we're sitting right now with. Uh, uh, over half of our fleet is considered old buses.
And how do you credit the district uh able to keep those buses in place for?
We have, we have a fantastic uh uh mechanic screw. We have, we really are very blessed with our drivers, with our our. Our director, transmission director, Mr. House, uh, his uh uh office staff who write up the P O's. Our mechanics are are top notch, uh, but we do invest money uh to keep the the buses going. And so we often uh, we do a lot of the work in-house. Uh, but when you get into major engine repairs or overhauls or transportation, uh, or transmission. Uh, uh, repairs or overhauls or turbos on our diesels, you know, you do have to send those out, and that's expensive, you know, processes. Uh, I think that what often people don't understand is um. First off, a bus right now is roughly, uh, the new ones that we're buying are ninety-three thousand dollars a piece for a a conventional seventeen-teeth passenger bus. Um, they uh, they're very expensive upfront. They they're they are a, they're a semi-truck. I mean, that's truly what they are. Running engines from a semi-truck and intermission from a semi-truck. In fact, when we do need repairs, they go uh uh outsourced to semi-truck dealers. Uh, or companies that work on semi-trucks. Uh, the other piece is our buses are required on an annual basis to be certified by the Ohio State Highway Patrol. So, you know, while I may have a little more rust on my seven-year-old car than I probably should, um, our buses can't. Uh, we have to then either uh work on um. Uh, you know, replace sheet metal, you know, redo undercoating, you have to, you know, fix uh uh. Even though torn seats in the bus uh can get us from getting stickered by the highway patrol. So we go through this annual inspection process on each and every one of our buses. If we don't get stickered, we cannot transport students, plain and simple. So every one of our buses has to be inspected. So it's one of those that. Yes, we can try to maintain a a twenty-year-old, you know, buses. But in order to do that, uh, still you're at the point where you're gonna have to replace. You know, a seventeen-year average, you have to replace uh two buses a year. Okay, so you're not getting a whole lot out of uh. A a whole lot of savings by saying, well, we'll go to a seventeen-year average, especially when you consider the cost of of. Maintaining those buses.
Thank you. That's something that on the campaign trail or being out at the lodge meeting with the neighbors that uh it comes up a lot. Why can't you, district, you know, keep those buses longer? You know, you don't need to pass a levy without it, but this is, this is one that um I'll keep in my back pocket of the campaign.
I have a question, because I think at some point we were supposed to come back to it, was the fieldhouse?
Yep.
I think we had a long discussion a couple of months ago about it. We said we'd revisit that.
So right now, um, you know, right now, where I would ask for uh some patience from the board. Is uh, Mr. Kosovar is working through uh the strategic plan, and part of his strategic plan is he has a subcommittee uh on our facilities. And so he has a a a number of stakeholders that he's meeting with. I think that subcommittee is actually headed up by Adam House. And so um, he's working through on what this subcommittee is uh saying that uh some upgrades that they would like to see throughout the district. Uh, we have representatives from athletics, from uh uh the performing arts. Uh, we have uh teachers in in involved as well. Um, you know, we have different stakeholders that are involved giving their feedback to Mr. Kosovar. So he's working through that process and and we should have an update on some of that information. I think the big challenge that we're going to have is ultimately when we look at that um uh one point one million. Um, um. You know, it reminds me of a movie, but I won't go on that tangent, but uh one point one million, it does sound like a lot of money and and I and I respect that. We have to look at our facilities in the district in total. We have roughly a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of buildings in the district. Uh, that, you know, new cost buildings, uh operating, maintaining those a hundred and fifty million dollars in buildings. Plus, we have a fleet of thirty-four daily route buses. We have another handful of vans. We have another handful of spare buses. To maintain all of those seven maintenance trucks that we use for plowing purposes. Um, when we set up that uh one point one million, it was not the magic number. That would provide uh for maintenance and upgrades of the district going forward. It was a number that we ended up targeting. If you remember, it was originally higher where it would have been one mil. But in order to keep back on that uh list from issue one twenty-one, I think I saw this issue will not increase taxes. In order to maintain it in the, under the millage, we dropped it to point eight mils. And that then set the price tag of one point one uh million dollars. Um, right now, what I think we're going to find uh that's going to happen over the next. Weeks, months, as we talk more through strategic plan on on facilities or other facilities in in general district. Is that one point one million will help us maintain what we have, okay? Um, it is not, it is not nearly robust enough to do significant upgrades, upgrades in significant. Areas of the district, um, uh, it with, at least with any type of reasonable timeframe. You know, if you're doing one every ten years maybe, but beyond that, it really is. Uh, maintaining what we have. An example would be as well as even as we budget through a P I. You know, this year, um, as we look back at our P I expenditures, I went over it with Mr. Kosovar. There was about three hundred thousand dollars in P I expenditures that so far this year, we're only about nine months into the. Or through the fiscal year, that were pop-up expenditures, okay? Ten thousand dollars for a new plow. I mean, we don't buy a, you know, a small plow. This is for the big dump truck that that, you know, plows. Um, the boilers at L B M S, a hundred thousand dollars that, you know, uh, we just got to the point where we just couldn't fix them anymore. Um, you know, the the, there are. There will always be those pop-up things that we need to keep money aside. Additionally, you know, roofs, uh, the roof, an entire roof replacement for this building. Uh, was priced out, I think around one point three, one point four million dollars. So when we look at roofs for, you know, across the district, um, again, we're fortunate. Most of the buildings, you know, are ten years or less. But still, you know, the 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 roofs that we have on are roughly twenty-year roofs. So we're a high school, we're getting to the point where we're about halfway through the life of that roof, so we need to look at. How are we going to replace a a high school roof that might be a five million dollar roof? The high school is just a very large.
Right.
Complex.
So would it make sense to go, when we do go on the ballot? It would, it sounds like we should go for another P I.
Well, you know, there is uh thought, we did speak briefly in our finance committee. Uh, about, you know, what would make sense? Do we couple it with a P I? Do we, do we couple it with a bond issue? Do we look at targeted things and say, hey, you know, uh, thank you, community, you've been fantastic about providing the the. The uh facilities that we have, we would like you to invest in, you know, one, two, three, four, five. And, you know, these are the 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 uh the next steps that we would like to do. Uh, some of it could be upgrades, some of it could be uh repairs, you know, different things like that. You have a performing arts center. That I believe opened in ninety-six. Uh, so you're coming up on, you know, uh, uh, am I right on that?
It's around two thousand. I think it was earlier than that.
Yeah, it was.
I think ninety-six is what it was, uh, because that's actually the twenty-year uh bond that came off the ballot. When we went on the ballot.
Right.
Um, but um, but you know, near here there, we have a a performing arts uh uh. Center that's, you know, over twenty years old or or right around twenty years old. Um, uh, that, again. I'm going to guess, I've not had in-depth conversations with Mr. Kosovar, but I'm going to guess. That there are going to be people who are saying we want to do, we should be doing significant improvements or upgrades at the performing arts center. Um, there are going to be different stakeholders who have different, um. I call them wants, but I understand that they may be needed. Don't, please don't say that it's not, uh, that I'm saying that it's just a a want, but. They're they're going to have different wants on how we spend our money. And that's again where we're going to have to talk about, how do we prioritize that as a work? What do we pick? You know, what are the, I I hate putting it this way, what are the winners and what are the losers? What do we, what can we fund and what can't we fund? Um, and then um, you know, or we look at alternatives. And say, okay, well, if we go on the ballot, do we couple it with a P I? Do we couple it with a bond? What can we uh, how can we communicate to our community? This is a a need that we have in order to provide not just the same facilities that. That you've given us, but upgrades now to those facilities, because that's what we're being asked to do.
I wasn't jumping there, but I.
I I.
I don't want to be as rude as I normally am. I I, I don't want to pour words in your mouth, but when you say when winners and losers, I think it's more of. Short or long term?
Possibly.
Yeah, if these are, if these are items that we we want, the district wants. You know, it's not necessarily, it's more of a priority, you know, one will come maybe before another. Um, that's just, that's that point, but kind of going back, sorry, going back to that series again. Again, it's it's one-time, one-time things for air handling, safety, um. The two things that that Mr. Hopkins mentioned, plow, safety. And uh. Boiler. It's part of the H V A C system. You can't have H V A C without that boiler. So. It's a one-time, whoops, we need that money. And whoops, Essers is one-time money that's coming in, so I I I. I struggle with. Why we're maybe putting, that's just another example as to why we're not using that for Essers versus putting in into P I. Again, P I, or I'm sorry, Essers is one time. You know, chances are that the boilers, that boilers. You know, we'll, we may have other ones down the road, but we don't win. You know, we know that we have this money, we have to spend it, and and we could use it for certain one-time things. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're spending the money. Now, and allocating maybe to the right areas.
So what I'm hearing you say is why not look at? Um, the boilers and put that in Essers instead of P I?
Right.
And and so when it comes to air handling HVAC that would fall into that?
You know, the reason that we didn't do that is um. Uh, the boilers are hot water boilers and they're not the air handlers. Uh, and the Esser, the the guidance document that we uh brought up specifically, uh, spoke about um. Uh, improving air quality.
H V A C.
Well, no, it's a specifically improving air quality.
H V A C is air quality.
I. So I I can, I can look at that again, but in my uh uh opinion at the time was when I went over with. Uh, Mr. Kosovar, uh, I didn't feel uh that it was within the intent of the Esser grant. Um, and that's why we had uh charged.
Well, I guess you could, you could, you could look at it a different way. Without a boiler, there's no heat, no heat, that's a safety issue for the students.
Do you have, do you have guidelines you've established to um? To staff and administration when it comes to spending Essers funds, um, whether it's. Um, formal guidance or uh informal guidance with regard to, hey, if you're going to spend this. Think of it this way, do you have anything like that in place?
Oh, I thought you were talking to him, but no, when it, when it comes to, we do, we, the guidance documents that he showed. So we we do go through the guidance documents from the Department of Education.
Sure.
But I wonder, do we have access to um an Essers consultant? To be able to, and Paul's nodding yes.
Uh, yes, there's an Essers because of the loud, uh, weather scenario. So there is a consultant, um, down in the, we email and discuss those things.
So we can bring up the boiler system to them. And it, and so what happens is you have these guidance documents and you interpret them. And and you go through and say, well, okay, it's air handling. Well, this is an air handling, this is this, and. So, I mean, it's something we can always run through the Essers consultant.
I think I said, the the point I was trying to make and I I did it probably in unfair way, uh, was that um, I. I, uh, Mr. Hopkins, you. Um, I like the way you lean, you lean conservative from a point of view of finances and money, and if if people are going to go through. The books and ask you how you're spending your monies. I like the way you think, because you think as many uh. Uh, conservative constituents would think. And um, uh, but again, if if there's a way, you know, maybe there's a way, but I I appreciate the way that you.
Again, I.
We can revisit that.
Yeah.
What was the life expectancy at the boilers? Cause that school opened in twenty thirteen.
We got a fifty percent off.
Yeah, so we we, the, the life expectancy is about twenty years.
So they shouldn't have gone bad.
They shouldn't have, and this is uh, Mr. Chris already presented at a board meeting.
Right.
Uh, cause I need the board to approve it as an emergency expenditure.
Yeah.
Um, the the boilers uh did go bad early. Um, we did work with the manufacturer of the boilers. They were no longer under warranty, but we did work with the manufacturer of the 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 uh. Boilers. They didn't recognize uh an issue with that boiler. We were able to buy new boilers at a significant reduced cost. Uh, that now we hope to have, you know, get twenty years of service on. Uh, if we would have gone with another uh uh type of boiler, uh, or if we would have replaced with another vendor, we would have paid a double or more. Um, so we we do, it is an issue that it it die early. Um, but um, we did, uh, Mr. Kosovar did due diligence on the new ones, making sure that they don't have the same known issues. Um, and they don't, they've been out for about six years, I think, this model. And there's not any known issues and and he did, you know, uh, uh, almost like hiring a new employee. Did the due diligence of reference checks of companies that use these boilers and things like that to ensure that. We were avoiding the same issue as much as possible.
Thank you for all that information. I know you were planning on giving us a manessaries report as well as a P I report, and that's appreciated. What else do we have from Mr. Hopkins?
We've gotten a lot of emails about baseball fields. And it sounds like a strategic, part of the strategic plan is building out what's going on with baseball field, what athletics. Is coming is part of that. And so that's going to be ready here in the next month or two?
I could take some of that. Can you pull up dates, um, uh, what he presented on October eleventh?
Yeah, I've got that document in front of me, but.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but.
But I think to put it up to talk about.
Yeah, I think there's one, the immediate situation of making sure that the baseball field is ready and playable.
Sure.
Walked over there this afternoon and there's definitely. One, there's a giant mound of dirt in front of the softball field. Um, but then two, there is some definite safety issues. In making sure that.
That's a, I I think I received um some of those same emails, so I took a walk over there last night and um. Um, that was after looking out the window and seeing the whiteout that we are experiencing and. Getting up yesterday morning and also shoveling snow and and it was awfully cold and. And, and it was awfully cold and I, I, I took a look at it, it, it looked in decent shape, but of course, snow being on it, I, I know it was kind of tough, but.
There's a. Trench in front of the visitors dugout from some runoff, it looks like, and there's definitely some more. Messy bits, not just sort of like playing in the mud, but so there, there's a couple of spots there and just. How can we make sure that these fields are ready in, for, for safe play for this season?
So, and I guess that was my point is that we, we still had snow on the ground. I know we had that seventy-degree day, but, um.
When's the season scheduled to start?
Probably, uh, probably this week or this past weekend, uh, is most, um, when I, I don't mean to put you out of the spot.
Sorry, I made cancellations last, or two days ago.
Yeah, so.
And why, and why did you make cancellations? Okay, and, and I, I guess that was my point, is that if there's, if there's snow on the ground, how can we maintain and, but, but go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, at our finance committee meeting, uh, that question was asked, uh, and Mr. Kozmar had responded that. Our maintenance crews were, uh, expected this week to go in and start doing all the edging on the, uh, grass in the fields. And then, uh, putting on, um, the, the big pile of dirt is, uh, additional ball diamond mix. That they use to, to fill in the field and drag it and.
I had a feeling it was something for that purposes, but it's just really what it comes down to is. You know, I'm not saying we need to have the fields ready to play tomorrow, but the reality is, is we've got to have them ready to play very soon. And what are we doing to ensure that they are ready to play and they are safe?
We're doing everything that we can. Um, we are at the mercy of mother nature. And so, um, you know, as we, I, I mean, we, we just are, I mean, that's the, the reality of it. I, I know Highland, I live in Brunswick, I, I think I had about five inches of snow, uh, on Sunday morning. Uh, I'm guessing that, you know, you probably have the same out, uh, at Highland there. I'm guessing you're not playing anytime. Immediately, you know, as well, what's up?
We chalked up this week.
Yeah, it's one of those that as you, with, I would love to say, in an ideal world, uh, baseball wouldn't be a spring sport in Cleveland. Uh, but that's not the reality of, that, that we live in. Um, and so we are, you know, we looked up some schools today, uh, other schools, uh, in the area in our conference and, and. You know, it shows on their website, their Twitter feed, that the games are canceled or, or things of that nature. Um, we are working as, as much as we can to make sure the fields are ready as soon as possible. Um, and, and absolutely make them safe for our players.
And, and I bring that up too, just because I, I believe it is our goal to have a turf field. And, um, that, that's something that we are looking forward to, to doing.
So to answer, let me answer Liz's question. If you can scroll down, um, my, oh, maybe to page. Uh, six on there, and this was his presentation, Dave's presentation in, um. October, and when, when we're talking about his strategic planning. If, if you go back and, and listen to his presentation, because I, I took some time to do that. What he indicates, and, and John made a good point where he's talking about timelines and, um. When he points out this particular slide, this one is permanent improvement as needed project expenditures and, and. It's different things that we want to do. The slide before are things that are, we're putting in our routine, like bus replacements, uh. Um, uh, crack fill and, and different things in parking lots. Then when you go to the next page, Todd, it's everything. So this is, um, total projects. That we're anticipating through twenty twenty-six. Now, one of the things he indicated is that there are more projects listed here than funded. And, and that's where we are with it, and part of his strategic planning group is prioritizing. To be able to say what should be done on this timeline, what can we move to the next year and, and move on? And you'll see things like the pack in here, um, I think in, so twenty, the summer of twenty-three. Is where it's been, um, slotted for the, the high school and baseball. Um, softball, high school softball and baseball turf of the infield. Um, so that's, that's what was planned out, was to do that project next summer.
In, in.
So they couldn't use it until twenty-four then?
Yeah, so the alignment, the alignment was take down Holly Lane this summer, and then that would free up some money next summer to be able to do something like that.
Well, obviously, I was under the impression, when I look at that and it's, and it's fiscal twenty-three, that it's going to, it's going to occur fiscal twenty-three.
And, and it very well could, but it would be the summer of twenty-three, which is at the end of our fiscal year.
Right, so. I don't think that that was, uh, well, at least for me, that wasn't, that wasn't the, the thinking. So I guess the question is, why can't it, or how can it be moved up to, um, the beginning of fiscal twenty-three? Because it, it sounds like it's just a timing issue. Because you're saying that, yeah, we could do it the summer of twenty-three. Why can't we do it, um, later this summer or fall?
So, you know.
And, and I'm sorry, and what's preventing it? And then how do we, how can we address that? Options?
So I think there's, you know, a two-part piece, okay? Part one of that is, I, I do think that through the strategic plan, we need to identify and prioritize what. Uh, the district board included in that wants, you know, what is the schedule of these projects, okay? Um, is that, is this a project that overall wants to be moved up, okay?
When will the strategic project plan be completed?
Their work at, they've been meeting.
Exactly.
Just, but let me, and we can set a time, we can set a deadline, and we can say that we want to see that by a certain date. Now, what I also would say, because the other conversations that we're hearing and, and things are starting to intertwine in some ways. Um, we know that in our last board meeting, we passed a resolution, um, for Parkside to go back to the city. And the city is in the midst of their planning for, um, fields and, and they have their recreation department that's doing work. Uh, for that, and one of the things that, that we can do is if we, if, if as a board. You want us to investigate bringing that from the summer of twenty-three. I'm sorry, yeah, the summer to, to doing it to this fall of twenty-two. Um, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So fall of twenty-two, one of the things that, um. We can do is, is talk to the city in some ways. Number one, to see what is their final plan? Because I know they're, they're investigating, they hired a, an architect to, um, do different field designs in different locations. So if we can engage with them. And even at the, the very least, try and match their timeline. And, and the reason we say that, and actually, uh, Mr. Kraft and I talked about this a little bit. If we match their timeline and they go to bid, well, if you have a company that's bidding on both the city fields and the school fields. We might be able to reduce that price and make it a little bit, a little bit more affordable, and then it puts us on a similar timeline. So I think there's some things we can investigate with that.
But I guess it's still, it's still a resource issue, you know, because e- even if it's four hundred thousand versus six hundred thousand. It's, it's still, that's the stumbling block right there is the timing of the money, right?
It, it can be, yes.
No, but that, that's, I'm just trying to share.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's the timing, we're not getting it.
It, but one of the things that, that, you know, again, board action, and I, and I don't want, well, I'll let you speak for the finance part of it. I don't want to jump in your.
No, it's, it's one of those that, uh, again, uh, there's a number of different things. And if the board would sit here and say that we want, you know, we prioritize this over other priorities, okay? And we want to do it on this schedule, we will figure out a way to make that happen, okay? Uh, but I think that where I ask for patience from the board is, I want to make sure the whole board, um, knows that there's. Different stakeholders have different projects and different priorities for those projects. And so, uh, but however the board ultimately, uh, chooses to prioritize, we'll make it work. We, you know, whether it's, it's done through advances or if we have to go out, uh, uh, and, and, uh, do a tan or some of our other type of debt. Uh, you know, there's options to do that. There are, uh, uh, but again, this brings up your, uh, idea of opportunity costs. If we do this, we give up X, Y, and Z. If we do this, there may be interest costs associated with it. If we do this, you can't do this. Um, and that's where I'm trying to communicate to the board that. You know, I think that when it's all said and done, we're going to see, like we see up here right now, you know, there are far more. Wants than we have funding available for, unless the board says, hey, let's do it all and just use general fund. Okay, we've got a sizable general fund carrier. And then in that case, what do we give up to have those? We give up, you know, the length of going on the ballot. You know, we would have to move up a timeframe, you know, on that piece. So it really does come down to, you know, it, it's a singular pie of money. There's going to be a lot of people grabbing at that same pie. The pie isn't going to grow at all. And that's where we're going to have to make those decisions on what we prioritize and what we don't.
Can we get the strategic plan by end of May?
Dave's not here, but I believe we can. Well, I mean, we, we have, we, so we have our, the stretch, the front, the face of the strategic plan is done. We know the goals and objectives and what people have been working on with the groups, or what are the actions associated with that? And we have, we actually, we have the documents pretty much done. And, and so the document is, is there and it's getting the, some of the details about some of the outcomes. Like the, the document, say, an action step is give us a, a prioritized list of, 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 of the different things that we want. So it's really, we really want to see the, the prioritized list out of that group.
Correct.
Yeah.
Can we get that by being?
Yes.
Trying to not be like, I want it tomorrow, but like, can we get that by, like, end of May?
That'll be impactized.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Could you send, uh? Because I can't read that. I don't know if all of, you can maybe, Liz can, but I'd like to see the projects for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, because maybe there's something. The, you know, put in the turf and substitute or take some of the, oh, thanks, see, that's better, but I, I could do it online.
Yep, I can, I'll send it to you.
Thank you, thank you.
The other part in, um, Dr. Guy and I briefly talked about this. Uh, right now, while we are waiting for Mr. Renala to start, uh, we don't have any representation on the, uh, recreation commission. And I have rightly suggested that somebody goes on there, uh, to represent the school district. So while these discussions are going on, it's always been the athletic director.
So our current director is not attending.
So he's not been a part of that on a.
From what I have been, um, he has not been, I have not talked to.
Sure.
Mark about this, but, um, I think it might be good for somebody to be sitting on these meetings while they're discussing. Basically, fields and whatnot, so.
I'd be more than.
Well, I.
If we can get two people on it, it'd be even better.
Well, I, I don't even know, I, I haven't asked, I'm not going to walk in and say, I'm here.
Hey.
Always ask if it's okay if I can attend, you know, because it's not my meeting, but.
Something for, for fun for you to look forward to, but definitely.
I'm really disappointed in you, Nick.
When I, I just think about prioritization, maybe with patience, uh, because I think when we do prioritize it, it's top of mind. And I think all of us have connections to those in the city and to have those conversations, um, together. As well as outside of this room. Uh, uh, I, I, I know that if we put our heads together, uh, potentially along with the city. I, I think about prioritization with patience, uh, the Dover, Dover campus was a priority. And if we acted immediately, we were talking about spending a million bucks on putting in a driveway. And a little bit of patience, we prioritize it, but with a little bit of patience. Uh, we ended up with a plan that saved the district as well as the community a ton of money. So that's, that's my, but what's that?
You were good with that, John.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, but I agree, and, and it is, and, and I think we're fortunate in that where, um, over the next couple of months. Um, the cities can be rounding out their plans as well. And, and I think as that comes to clarity, then we can work along with them and, um, but we're, we're. You know, as Todd said, we have, we have, uh, our funds that we're splitting up and, you know, if something becomes a priority, we'll find a way to make it happen. And, but, but we also want to warn and say, you know, when you do that, then, you know, you could be on the ballot quicker in this way or, you know, other things. When, when someone comes up about the refield, reed field upgrade in here, they'll say, well, wait a minute, what are, why are you doing? So we, we, we know that all those things happen, so we can listen to the group and come back.
Or not, if we come up with a campus type plan, correct?
Or, again, I, I, uh, keep people laboring and everything. Um, I would really prefer us to go with the mantra of patience. Maybe not this year, but maybe next year or the year after. It's not a no, it's a let's, let's figure it out.
I like that idea.
Okay, because I really don't want anyone in this strategic plan to be, you know, thinking that there's something they really, really value, and they all value. Um, and they get told, nope, sorry, there's going to be new softball field, you're, you're not going to get. Versus, hey, there's going to be some priorities. This may not happen this year, you know, maybe in two years or three years. That, I think I would, I'd rather have us, that would be our mantra, versus saying, this is what we're giving up. Because we're not giving up anything, if anything, we're just postponing something.
In some ways, and, but, and to your point is if, if Todd had that back up, and really what we're looking to do is. And, and I just, one of the things I want to really make clear and give Dave credit for is. Dave does have a plan, you know, and he's looked at these things, he gave, he's given us an eighteen-month, uh, needs list. He's put out this timeline, you know, in October and saying, here are all the things, this would, hey, this would, twenty-three would be a good year to look at these things. And we prioritize what's there, maybe some go to twenty, like you're saying, with patience, maybe some go to twenty-four, you know, here's what we have in twenty-four. And, and we do that, and the other thing is looking for, another thing he mentioned is some of these, we may be able to look at some alternate, um. Uh, funding sources, where we can get some support, you know, is it, are there some things on here? Where we're looking at in twenty-five, high school athletic field storage building, does somebody want to name it? You know, Nick may find someone, no pressure, but, you know, who wants to name, uh, an athletic storage facility, so.
This is, you know, this really kind of goes into, especially when Nick was being introduced, um. I feel like all we're doing is adding more to your to-do list. I am so sorry. Um, welcome to Westlake. But, you know. But the sponsorship boards, you know, that definitely, these are things that, you know, especially at the football fields and sponsorship boards at the, um. Softball and baseball fields and, in all truthfulness, I'm surprised we don't have sponsorship at the tennis courts, because people drive by those every day.
Mr. Renal does that already, and I know he's, he's, he's going to do that in Westlake as well, so. He's even told us about how he's put the signs up with zip ties in his suit, so you see him out there.
What else?
So as to just cap off what I was saying about being, uh, patient and, and.
Prioritize with patience.
All of that.
Yeah.
Um, I wouldn't use that same methodology to the softball and baseball parents. Because they've been waiting for ten, twenty years to have any significant improvements other than what we did a year and a half ago. So when you look at it, even if you put thirty thousand into prepping the field every single year for, for the last ten, twenty years. You would have paid for turf. So it, it's one of those things that we need to make sure that it's not looked at as a luxury. All right, it's looked at as, right now, as an eyesore. From softball parents, baseball parents, when, when teams come into this, to the city, they see a beautiful high school. They see the beautiful elementary school. You walk down the back and you see baseball field and the softball field. Yes, nice, step one, phase one improvements. We need to continue to build upon that. And that was, that's where, um, we need, we need to focus.
I, I think about that, I think about the other districts in our conference. And are they struggling with the same issues we have with regard to their baseball fields? Um, so because the weather, the snows last a little bit longer.
Well, everyone's going to, as Mr. Hopkins said, everyone struggles with it. The, the, the key is, um, it's another one of those. Items that we can put into our cap to help retain those students who decide to want to go to other, other schools.
Okay.
Not even a pro, it was just any other schools, parents moving in or whatever. We have top-notch facilities. Except softball and baseball, and they are pretty popular. There's softball all summer long, baseball all summer long, and those kids want to play for their team, for their high school teams, you know? And it's a number of kids, it's not, you know, for basketball, there's what? Twelve, twelve, and maybe fifteen, um. Um, you, you, you're looking at twenty five, um, per team freshman JV. varsity, you're also then looking at JV softball, varsity softball. I mean, there's a lot of students involved in athletics pertaining to softball and baseball, more so than some of the other sports that we have. Yet they've all been able to enjoy the benefits of the investment that communities made and the board has made into all the facilities that we built. Unfortunately, baseball and softball have been left behind, so.
What I hear you saying is you're, you're activating your board to let's step out and let's, let's prioritize this and let's start reaching out and try to make this happen sooner or later.
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
I just, uh, want to say, I think we're all in agreement with you, John, you know? I don't, I, I certainly would like to see it sooner than later.
I'm with Barb. Did you hear that?
Anything else for baseball or PI?
I would just say thank you both. It, it's a tough job you guys have, especially balancing the needs and wants of everybody. Um, it's great that we have the PI. Uh, because we didn't, and we've told the beauty with it, we're going to take care of our facilities. And that is the number one part, so.
I'll add to that as well and say thank you both also. Anything else? Is there a, any other board comments or board items?
Um, in regards to our, uh, staff member and community member who came and spoke about Ramadan?
Yeah.
Um, is there any concern about with test, state testing about to start with the timing of Ramadan? Is there anything we can do to, like, whether it's get tests going first thing?
We, oh, we make sure that we get tested on the first thing. Um, to the, our testing, uh, no student testing the afternoon because they would be tired.
Can you, can you come to, just so for the microphone, sorry, because we can hear you, but maybe people at home can't.
Um, so we don't schedule any state tests at all ever in the afternoon. Those always start first thing in the morning, um, when students are, are fresh. They start about a half hour after students arrive. Um, unfortunately, we can't change timing because it's state testing windows. And then, you know, we have fifteen days for ELA and math, and that, our fifteen days just started. And then we have fifteen days, um, um, after spring break to finish up the test. So unfortunately, testing starts right after April first and ends right before May first. So it falls right in, in Ramadan, during Ramadan, and so there's nothing we can do for that except make sure that we're just sensitive to making sure, you know, quiet spaces, that we start at a good time of day, and we will continue to do that.
Do people like Mrs. Mustafa say that, that's, that's a great, uh?
Yes, and I mean, she's, you know, been a proctor for, for this test for years. Unfortunately, she knows what, what, what has to occur. Now, something else that we just did today is we, we did send out guidance last year to our teachers, um, just reminding them of what a lot of our students are, are, you know, experiencing over the next month. And so that will be going out again and just as a reminder to please watch other projects, other assignments, big tests. Uh, right, I'll remember, students may have gotten up very early, um, in the morning, you know, to eat before the sun came up, that kind of thing. So, and that is going out again this, this week to our staff.
But the other part with that is, you know, also, we can't control the state testing, but we can control our testing.
Correct.
So on certain days like Eid, you know, we make sure we wouldn't have major projects due or, um, testing on that day. And, you know, we met actually in this room with, uh, the West Cleveland Muslim Association. They came in and had a great conversation with us. Um, different things, uh, for us to watch for, because when, uh, what was interesting is fasting is fasting. I mean, a lot of times when people think about fasting, they, they, um, say, well, you can drink water, it's nothing. And, and so then we could be concerned on hot days, like if it does get warm for a period of time, kids on recess, kids playing sports, um, doing any type of things like that as well. So there's, you know, while we can't do a whole lot with the state testing windows, we can be considered another areas.
Thank you.
Any other board items or comments?
Uh, thank you to our staff and students and the council PTA's for wonderful dollars for scholars. And it, I'm thrilled, the only injury it seems like we had was, uh, Mr. Wood's finger.
He deserves it, though. Done something in his life.
But it was a fantastic game.
Do you have any idea how much, how much money was raised?
Haven't heard.
It was a very good turnout.
A lot of them.
Yeah.
Any other board comments? Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employer official? The second discussion? Broca?
Turn into executive session at eight sixteen PM, Stole?
Yes.
Losinski?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Kurnan?
Yes.
The board will take no action in executive session or recon out of executive session.
Yeah, it was long.
So, great, put your finance.